Okay, my clock just turned six thirty. I see that we have a quorum in the room. And so I'm going to call a meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up tonight is approval of our consent agenda. Uh, we have vouchers totaling ninety-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars, twenty-one cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Also, we have minutes from the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any cor- corrections or or comments regarding the minutes? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next brings us to our first public comment opportunity. I see we have somebody from the public in the in the room. Uh, I'm not sure we have anybody from the public online. Is there someone that would like to address the council?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Well, if you wouldn't mind coming up here to the podium, we'd sure appreciate it. And if you'd state your name.
My name is Dave Zeller.
Okay.
Uh, last week or last meeting, I noticed that they had talked about the uh capital improvement plans and looking over it, I had some questions for the street update.
Okay.
It notes at the top, twenty-twenty-two, but it shows on the first page that it had been updated. I'm just curious if any of the prices for the street have actually been updated on that and that they just may not have.
Yeah, I don't think the date had been changed. Darren updated them in twenty-three when we we started going over that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there should be. They're all estimates anyway, but yeah, they should be updated for twenty-three. I think they updated them in May.
Okay. Then the other question I had is, I know Birch Street and B Street, there's no down here to be done approximately at the same time. I didn't know if you were going to have a separate meeting specifically with those residents to discuss traffic uh to and from their houses, uh, how the flow is going to be or how the details were going to be. Uh, main concern is that alley four that actually is in between Birch and Ash, that's a hill shape. And that entrance is on Birch and B Street, so there is no access to Grand from that alleyway. And then I didn't know if there was any consideration on when the water tower, I don't know if they drain it, if it's an overflow. But it comes right down the east side of Birch Street, so I didn't know if there was going to be any plans for that.
Have to address that drainage. Yeah, there there would be during that time. We're not in design on that one yet. Um. Anytime we do a project like that, it that one, I think, is on the third third priority uh set, so it wouldn't be for a while. Um, kind of to be determined, I think. Whenever we do a project like that, though, we do sit down with residents and kind of go over how how traffic's going to flow, how things are going to be um phased. You know, we don't always do it all at once. We just sort of it may be one project, but we may do this section first and then move up that way. Uh, we do address street drainage at those times. Um, if there's any storm drainage, I don't know if there is any up there. I think it's all surface drain um down down to D Street. So, uh, yeah, but we would we would address those issues when we do the design.
There is a, I believe there's a drainage gate actually prior to B.
B Street, okay. Yeah, I'm not real familiar with that one over there, but yeah, it would all be taken into account. We needed to replace that. Uh, we'd also look at water and sewer lines. We look at all utilities when we're um opening a project like that so that we could make sure that they're all adjusted appropriately.
And then when these streets are repaved or concrete, um, is it in the plans to do from the gutter to the first or to the sidewalk for the entrance for the driveways, whereas the residents going to need to get with uh the concrete or the asphalt people and figure out
Yeah.
to get all that done.
Yeah, we usually go um back into the apron. If if there is a sidewalk that runs there, we would go back up to the sidewalk usually and cut right there. Uh, then we re-pour the approaches as part of the project.
Okay.
So.
And then I know that alleyway entrance there from Birch going into the alleyway is pretty steep.
Yeah, we try to adjust those if we can. It just depends on the elevations and kind of how it gets shot out. Like I said, that one hasn't been surveyed at all yet, so or designed. We don't really have anything on that one yet, but
Okay.
that would be something we take into consideration.
Okay, so probably do water line and the street at the same time. I know the sewer line is in the alley. There was plans for that as well.
Yeah, that one may be already lined. We maybe already have done that one. Um. Anytime we open up the street, any utilities that are in the street or adjacent to, we try to move the water to the back of the curb. Um, I'm not sure where it is right over there, so.
Yeah.
Uh, or if it even needs to be replaced, that that would be a determination. We'd make it that thing too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the only thing I didn't see in the capital improvement is anything on electrical. And electrical guys are here today to talk about the transformer. But I didn't know if there was any talk about upgrading, at least on the west side.
Yeah, we do have a little bit of stuff. We're going to be rebuilding some line over there. Uh, it's not in that plan. The the electric one isn't in that plan, but we've got we've got one um kind of generally laid out, but we don't have it. It's not included in that plan, so.
Okay.
We are going to rebuild some lines. Uh, we're we're always kind of in that process and then uh replacing transformers is needed. Um, there's things on the circuits we need to adjust. Uh, we've got a couple of plans to do. Uh, Carriage Hill, which isn't over there. It's further south, but yeah, we've got different places sort of lined up for that. But if that's one of the things we do approach pretty regularly.
Okay.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming and and thanks for bringing your questions. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the council at this time? We'll have another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. So uh, hearing none, nobody else ready to go at this point, we'll close that public comment opportunity. We'll move on to uh item D, and we have Brooke Carroll and James Gang from KPP Energy here to discuss the Pace Solar Project. If you guys would come forward, we'd appreciate it. We'll let James bask in your glow.
Well, thanks.
Okay.
Uh, well, thanks for having us today. Um, James and I wanted to kind of visit with you all and talk about our Pace project. I know Lou and and Matt have been keeping you informed on the progress and everything, but now that we we need to have an official document signed pretty soon on for an easement, we thought maybe it would be appropriate to come and kind of just answer any questions that you might have on the project. Um, this is kind of a high, this handout that I have here is a high level um summary of just kind of where we are on the project. I sat down to, we all we sat down to write this and I told James I could probably concoct maybe twenty-seven pages worth of information on this project, but we we summed it up for yous to to keep it easy, but um just kind of just kind of moving along. The first the first part is your project overview. I'm not going to read that because that's the information that you I'm sure you've heard over and over again. The progress update on the Hillsborough side is probably more of interest right now to you and and we've provided you a map here that kind of shows um what our developers have have put together for us. Um, and then just some key points of some items that have happened um in your area and things that are going to be happening. So right now, the surveying and title work are all complete, which helped us prepare the easements that you that we have before you today. Um, our our developers have prepared the PV sys report and the engineering report to determine if it looks like a good site, if there were any issues. Um, you know, its output, all all of the key components that go into whether or not it's a good project or not, those have been completed. Um, and right now, we're kind of waiting on the environmental, tribal and archaeological requirements, which goodness gracious, those we're looking at sixty days out probably on that. So basically, um there there is a lot of things happening with that. I think James has been in communication probably with Lou and Matt on drones and things that have been people walking out there um or hoping that they don't find an arrowhead or shiny hornet toad on any of the property, you know, any anything like that 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 could cause remediation issues that that we need to work on. Um, just some statistics. Um, it it appears that your solar site, it's going to be a one megawatt um unit. It's going to produce about two-point-four million kilowatt hours per year. And that those kilowatts will be offered into the SPP integrated market, so it'll be a marketable resource. And just just for fun, I I did a calculation to determine that that would be about nine percent of the total metered energy that you purchased from you last year. So just to kind of put that into perspective. Um. Any questions on those components? I it there's a lot of moving parts. I don't know if I left anything out on that, James.
Well, a little little bit to expect on the environmental. Um, there's been surveying, there've been drone flights. Um, there's actually been boots on the ground walking it, looking for uh endangered species, um, like Brooks said, arrowheads, things like that, anything that could take the archaeological or the environmental states, the next step. Also, all the Indian tribes have been notified, which is a requirement. Um, there are seven Indian tribes that we have to work with um throughout all our projects. Um, so we're waiting. That's the sixty days. We're waiting on their evaluation of the site. If it does go to the next level, um, there will actually be archaeologists, archaeologists onsite digging one foot holes every 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 twenty-five meters in a grid pattern. So something that, you know, could happen, not necessarily it will, but it could happen.
This is the fact that this is cultivated land probably helps us a little bit because that dead ground's been turned over.
Could be.
Quite a few times.
They they showed us the process because we were concerned about damage to property. Um, and they showed us what they do and and there was slide by slide that shows the hole. They they take the ground up and lay it over nicely and then, you know, they'll fill it and try to make it look exactly like they left it. So it's not like.
There will be cross damage, though, if there is a cross.
Yeah.
There is, yeah. Just one of those hurdles that we will have to. Production for you scares.
Okay, and so the next part of this is the actual discussion on the easements, which you all have been provided um ahead of time. And this was drafted by by JT um for for our members, and this is just a general um easement that's pretty typical. It just basically grants us the access to the land. Um. It says that, you know, we'll we'll take care of insurance. We'll make sure that, you know, once the unit is no longer in service, we we make the land make land back like it was. Um, and and that's that's just basically it. Um. Now, the the next part of that would be into the future, um, we we plan to prepare an operation and maintenance agreement between us and K uh KPP and the city of Hillsborough that will allow, I mean, i- if you so choose, for us to compensate you all for any type of maintenance, if you need to mow, if you need to, if we need to call on, you know, some of your city staff to come out and and take care of the solar unit at all. Um, we want to make sure that this is a project that doesn't um end up costing the city anything. Um, KPP wants to bear all costs, so, you know, if you have to have a man go out and mow, we want you to bill us for the for the hours that that was there. In that operation and maintenance agreement is where we're going to kind of, I believe, address the compensation um for the use of the land. We want to keep the compensation separate from the easement um for possible different tax implications of that land. So if we do it that way, when we work it all out, what we're going to do is we're going to have probably a credit on the KPP bill for the for the amount of energy that's created from generated from the solar unit based on um the cost of behavior.
Compensation for what you're needing now.
So that's going to be the way that works, so that there isn't really any agreement, no, no compensation is for the easement. And we want to make sure that we keep those things separate. Have any questions about that?
Questions?
All right. Well, then moving along, uh timeline, I thought it I thought this might be interesting. So um you'll know when things start happening, possibly. This was also provided by our developers and you know, as soon as we get the notice from USDA to proceed, then all hands on deck, because, you know, our goal is to get as many of the these units into town by twenty-twenty-four, latest first quarter twenty-twenty-five, but we have submitted our grant, um, our our loan application, I should say. Yeah, we did it on January nineteenth, and now we're just in the holding phase, so we're waiting to see what else they need from us and and to move forward, but we have to wait until we get that notice before we can do anything. Um, I believe we have secured a couple of transformers that have a possibility of a fifty-two week out timeframe to get, so.
That sounds familiar, yeah.
Yeah.
For for our larger ones, I think James and our our developer kind of secured those, and so.
Trying to get enough work done and quotes in, so the second we get the the word, we can start buying stuff. But transformers are the best we've found is forty weeks, so.
Wow.
Um, we're going to do the best we can. That could delay things slightly, but as far as um solar modules, um, I heard today that they've production has filled up twenty-twenty-four, but we're in line for cancellations, and that's worked real good for our developers. Since our projects are smaller, they can get a megawatt or two megawatts of 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 canceled orders pretty pretty easily, so that's what we're betting on. Um, we do have to meet a domestic content requirement, so about everything's going to be American-made. Um, an American source, so.
And that kind of flows right into the next section, the finan- financial impli- implementations. Um, so to the reason that this project is so exciting for us is we get to take advantage of that twenty percent loan forgiveness that USDA is is offering us on this, and so you know, on a forty-eight million dollar project, which is all the projects together, um, we're getting a pretty substantial loan forgiveness amount of twenty percent. And then we are eligible for elective tax pay or elective pay tax credits that we're hoping to most of everything's going to be thirty percent off of that as well, in addition to an additional ten percent for the domestic content that we're making sure that our developers are using. And then in special circumstances, we're getting an additional ten percent. Maybe if we can, if we um, we've actually applied, we're we're in the queue to see if we get that additional ten percent on an LMI community that we're putting one in in Wellington. So with all of that being said, um, this power, this generation is a very cheap source of power to put in the KPP for portfolio. Um, right now, when we looked at our forecast and we put in a certain interest rate, which has already changed since then, I think it's come down. We were looking at over a twenty-five-year period on average, about fifty cents per power is what we're happened to pay for all of this. So I mean, that that is excellent. I think if we were to go out on the market, we are looking at closer to what.
So to go out and buy into a large solar array, you're looking at about uh six cent energy, where this is coming in about three cents. And that is all due to the incentives that we're getting. We didn't get these incentives, these projects would not be worth, not make sense, so.
And it's all it's all because of you guys allowing us to do these and just maybe.
And and along that line, you might just talk about the timing of this energy coming on for us in terms of our need for us. It may keep us from having to go out and buy paper, paper energy, right?
We're refining ourselves with um with, I I just wrapped, pretty much wrapped it up today. Some of the numbers are real fresh in my head. But um with um ever-changing policies at SPP where they've raised our reserve margin, which cuts cuts away from our excess energy. Um, and just our units physically getting older and not being able to perform. You know, we're we've dwindled down any excess energy we have to. I think we're in twenty-twenty-four, we're just going to have like three hundred kilowatt hours excess where we're used to having like twenty megawatts excess.
Wow.
And in twenty-twenty-five, we go deficit. Um, whenever you go deficit, you got to pay penalties, you got to go find paper capacity, and paper capacity just just we're seeing that that's about seven dollars per KW month. So when you start doing the math on that, it's really, you know, for ten megawatts, you know, that's nearly seven million dollars a year you pay for capacity. So this is coming on at a perfect time where we can bridge that gap before we're zill. I can't, I need to stop calling it word syllable. When when our walnut energy center um comes online and hopefully that'll be online about twenty-seven is what we're shooting for, so.
But, you know, that's really what KPP Energy is about. It it a us being members of a pool, you know, we do things for the benefit of the whole. And, uh, you know, all of us participating in in this project and doing our part makes a big difference to the whole, so it's one of our, we're in, we're at, Hillsborough is the largest non-generating member of KPP. And so this gives us an opportunity to contribute back, you know, on the generation side through a technology that's, you know, pretty in vogue right now and 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 pretty pretty popular, so. You know, it's 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 definitely the right thing for us to do and and uh I couldn't be more excited about it myself.
Thank you. Yeah, it's it'll be a fun project. It would be very busy times.
Now, did I also understand that the smaller one-megawatt projects probably will go off first?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
So it'd be kind of dependent on how we get materials in, like, you know, how we get transformers in, maybe we can get bigger ones in faster or smaller ones in faster and then what the output of the the output, the order or the magnitude of what solar panels we can get to, so.
Well, we'd certainly look forward to being at the head of the line.
Do what we can.
This last page is just a highlight. Um, we've been asked by some what what they look like, what's it going to look like when it gets there. Now, this is this is a project that was done by Priority Power. That's our developer um in Beloit. And they they gave us some really nice pictures and and yours isn't going to look exactly like this, but this is something that you could expect. An indication, yeah, what what these are going to look like, and uh Priority Power does a really good job also, like when 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 it's done, we we do ribbon cutting ceremonies and they put up signage and they do all kinds of great things um at each location, so I anticipate, you know, doing something, uh some sort of ribbon cutting ceremony. They've even said they they bring food. I I don't know if they're going to do that for all of them.
Oh, it's out by the wastewater. Maybe we cut the ribbon and come back.
It's good on the right day.
Well, that's true.
The wind blowing. Yeah, this isn't the right day.
You know, and these are going to be hopefully good um educational things for your community, for the high school, um whoever wants to to learn about it, so.
That's that's what we have. Um, and at your leisure, we would like for you to look at these minutes, determine whether or not you got any questions and vote to approve that or whatever you'd like.
Attorney's pretty tough. I don't know if he's red like this or not.
For him to take it back to JT and say, this is.
Think he wrote it?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, oh, he wrote it.
He does all the work.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Okay, so we now have before us consideration of granting an electrical generation utility easement to KPP Energy, which uh you have in your packets.
We're going to vote on it.
Yeah. So uh, if uh, are there any questions?
So would say, we got it. I got it pulled up here for you so you can see it, but uh. We've gone around the floodplain there to do that. I don't know that it's super would need a ton of work to get it up to where it is. It's not real low, but uh, it's good that we avoided that there. I think that that'll lay out pretty nice, and one of the advantages with the way this is set up is that we still retain enough room on the east side of the site to do uh lagoon expansion if we ever needed to. Uh, it's designed to be able to have one more cell that would be on the west side of it, and this this gives us the space to do that, so uh, it works pretty well. And it's right now, it's farmland. We've got a contract with a farmer. Uh, I don't remember what the acreage price is right now. Um. Man, I think we make about thirty-two-hundred dollars a year off of this track, but that's it's a big track. Um, so yeah, it's it it's a great spot. It's right, you know, it's kind of out of the way, but it's still 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 within the zone there and, you know, makes a lot of sense for us, I think.
Hey, any questions?
So that's the floodplain there. Uh, I guess, do we know what any type of risk would be if we have a, you know, really bad uh, you know, rain period? Yeah, you know, how how far the water would come.
Maybe.
That's that's our risk that we'll take on and and those have been those have been taken in consideration in the construction, so, you know, it's all going to be a couple of feet off the ground.
Okay.
And I'm sure that that doesn't get that.
You know, it's not that bad right there.
So, yeah, you bet. Those have been taken into consideration, and that's and that's the risk that we take on as well.
Okay.
Not much dirt work needs to happen there, but I'm sure they'll they'll make sure that it's leveled or everything that needs.
Maybe they put down rock under all that. It's fenced and rocked underneath it, yeah.
I I prefer to have rock. You'll notice in pictures that those do not, and it's not common to put rock under them, but
Oh, yeah.
I would prefer to have rock. That way you can
Spray it.
Just spray it.
Yeah, a lot of them way easier.
I mean, I I think that that would be a lot better than someone trying to run a mower around there and you're running into them, breaking things. I mean, it's.
We could deploy a herd of goats. I know. Funny, but yes, they do do that around solar panels.
Well, you know, I think it'll look better in in the long run.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be nice.
Throw in one goat at least.
Well. Stoking goat.
Hey, any other questions or comments? Since we have members of the public here, is there any questions that you guys might have regarding this project?
One question, or I got a couple of questions. Uh, the impact resistance of the panels, what are they rated to withstand?
Um, good question. Um, I don't know that I can give you a specific spec on them, but these panels have been deployed all over the United States, and they are, they are whenever a hailstorm or a storm comes through, they have a little weather um uh units on them that they will go into what they call storm mode, where they actually lay flat, which sounds counterproductive to what you think a hailstorm is, but they're actually more um hill resistant when they go flat, so they'll deploy and they'll 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 move to a flat situation. So.
So in that case, if there is a panel, excuse me, that needs to be replaced, would that be on KPP or would that be Hillsborough?
KPP. This is a KPP
Asset.
Asset, and it's a hundred percent our risk on the project.
But when we say that, Hillsborough is a member of KPP, so in that sense, you know, it's our asset too, because we're we're KPP members, so.
And Matt is going to have to cut a check to replace that.
No budget impact to them. But a very good question. These are tracking, so they track from east to west throughout the day. So it follows the sun.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Uh, I'd accept a motion to uh to uh approve the electrical generation utility easement to KPP Energy as submitted. Councilman by moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, guys. And travel safe.
Hey, we do have Brett on. He's still muted, but he's there.
Okay. All right. Well, next up, we have an annual department head report, and we have Avery Unruh and Tyler Edgar here from the golf course. Avery?
We'll let him get that pulled up.
Hey, digging that app. That looks nice.
Thank you. Yeah, it actually came from, uh, uh, there's a guy in Kansas City that makes these. They're at a store and so bought one.
Nice.
Yep, I thought I'd represent.
There you go.
Gotta show Casey pride.
There you go.
That's right. Yeah, so, uh, new annual report tonight. Tyler's here with me. He won't be saying a whole lot, I don't think, but if I need him to, most definitely will. Uh, but. Uh, yeah, you can go ahead and if you want to go to that next slide. So this is actually a slide that I included in our presentation last year. These are the numbers that we saw from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. These are all estimated numbers and I'll talk a little bit more about that once we get into the next slide. But the important numbers here are those percentages. Uh, we saw major increases in greens fees, our cart rentals. Um, that also includes push carts and, uh, club rentals, things like that. And then our driving range sales were also up. Um, but I did have a goal, uh, that I set, uh, when I first started at the golf course that I wanted to see the golf course grow by five members. Uh, every year for the foreseeable future. And that was a goal that we didn't meet in twenty twenty two. But, uh. Looking into twenty twenty three, we did meet that goal. Um, so in twenty twenty three. Things got pretty, uh. Uh, exciting, uh, I thought Tyler and I both, as we were figuring up these numbers, were pretty impressed with, uh, how things turned out. So, uh, in greens fees, which are basically the rounds played per year, uh, we saw a twenty twenty, uh, twenty two percent increase. Uh, that includes tournaments, um, our club tournament, sponsored tournaments, uh, it includes high school tournaments, uh. Tabor JV host tournaments at our course as well. So that includes all that and our daily rounds. Um, and that came out to around six thousand round played. Um, twenty two percent increase. So we've seen over the last, I mean, you add those percents together of the last. Two years, we've seen a forty two percent increase in greens fees, which, uh, to me has been pretty fun to see. We're seeing the course grow and, uh, it's. It stays pretty lively out there. Um, we've also seen a ninety three percent increase in rentals. Now, this number is, uh. Is a little higher than what we saw in twenty two, twenty twenty two, because last year was the first year we were able to add a card reader out at the golf course. And so, um, in twenty twenty two, we didn't have a way to track our cart rentals through our cash flow. Because everything was paid with cash and things were all put in the same envelope and it was difficult to track that. And so that's why that number is so big. Next year, we won't see a, uh, increase like that. Um, but that was an increase from three hundred to just over six hundred, um, in cart rentals alone. And then that also included, uh, uh, that well, and that didn't even include like our push carts and club rentals. That, that's kind of a separate number, but overall it was a ninety three percent increase there. So that was a lot of fun to see. Um, and then forty seven percent increase in driving range sales. This number is also a lot bigger than what we'll see. Um, because this now includes the bill that we got from the Tabor Golf Team. Um, we never included the, uh. The balls that were hit by the Tabor Golf Team in that number. Um, but now that we have, um. Through the city, management of the city, we have a bill that we send to them every year and we get numbers back from that as well. Um, we did see an increase, uh, in membership in twenty twenty three, and this is where, uh, that goal was met. Uh, we reached that goal of five new members. Um, we've had sixty one single members, twenty seven family memberships, which is a total of sixty five. Uh, and then seven student memberships and we are already on pace to surpass this goal in twenty twenty four. If the numbers continue to grow, uh, like they are. So that's been pretty cool. Uh, yeah, you can go on the next slide. This is our tournament list for this year. Um, we have, um. This has been one of the main, uh, sources of income for the golf course, uh, for as long as it's been. And, uh. Now that the, uh, city is taking over management, Tyler is, uh, and I'll have a slide kind of later after this one about. Um, Tyler's gonna be taking over as our tournament director and we've added three new tournaments this year. The Tip and Tuck Tournament, which is May, uh, I can't read that from here. Eighteenth, okay. Uh, the Couples Tournament, the Couples Tournament, uh, it's been about five years since we've ran a Couples Tournament. It was one that we struggled to get people involved with, but, uh, we've been in some communication with other courses. And our hope is to really get that tournament back into our, uh, schedule. Uh, and then the other one is the one person scramble at the, kind of towards the end of the year on October fifth. We've never had a tournament hosted in October. But we've seen so much growth and success at the course that, um, we're hoping that adding one later in the season will, uh, be positive and bring some people in. But these tournaments can draw anywhere from twenty to a hundred individuals from out of town, depending on what tournament it is. If it's a, a single tournament where you're competing yourself, that number is probably twenty to thirty. But we also have team tournaments where we have up to three people on a team, uh, and that can bring in, well, we have a. Hundred and fifty people come for our, uh, three Marion Hillsborough three person scramble. So, uh, it's pretty fun to see a bunch of people from courses around the state come to play in these tournaments. Uh, and then another big one we're hosting this year, of course, is the Big Challenge Cup between Marion and Hillsborough. That's in Hillsborough this year. So it's, uh, it's, I'd say it's more of a friendly, uh, competition now than it had been in past years, but it's still a competition. It's a lot of fun. Uh, we enjoy competing against Marion, so. Um, yeah, go on to the next one. Uh, taking on more responsibility. Uh, twenty twenty four will be the last year that the Hillsborough Golf Association continues as our advisory board. And we just really want to thank them for their many years of service. Uh, they've poured countless volunteer hours and, and dollars into the course, making it, uh, the beautiful piece of property that it is today. And, uh, not only from the association, but, um, you know, Gary Andrews was there for thirty three years. And so, um, they played a key role in what it is today. But in twenty twenty three, they had already taken on a smaller role as the city began to take over management, uh, of the golf course. Uh, but they set calendar dates, they ran our tournaments and, and played that advisory role for the core staff last year. Um, but this year, that kind of means Tyler's gonna be taking on that new title as Hillsborough Golf Course Assistant Superintendent and Tournament Director. Um, not only does this include being the tournament director, but he'll also be managing the clubhouse as well and running some office hours out of the clubhouse. Um, but moving forward, we look to incorporate after, uh, the association, um, completely. Um, as disbanded, we look to form a small board of three to four individuals, uh, that will continue in an advisory role. Ways council can help. Uh, so there's a lot of ways council can help. Deck project is one of them. And as you saw, uh, from my handouts, we'll be talking a little bit about that, uh, here in a bit. But updating the clubhouse bathroom to be ADA compliant, that's something, uh, the main bathroom in the clubhouse is, isn't ADA compliant. It's upstairs and we're looking to host more events at the clubhouse in future years. And so making the bathroom ADA compliant, um, will help us, uh, draw in. Different crowds in, in the community. Uh, we had a baby shower at the clubhouse last year. And there was a grandmother that was in a wheelchair that, uh, they had to lift up the stairs to actually get into the clubhouse. And, and then using the bathroom on top of that was difficult because we don't have a ADA compliant bathroom. So, um, resurfacing, uh, service road and walking path. So service road runs along the south side of the golf course and then back, um, to the west side and into the sports complex. Um, that's one that, um, is, is kind of just on our wish lists. It's in pretty poor shape. Uh, but not only is it used by Tyler and I and our golfers, a lot of community members use that as a walking path. And, uh, um, I know Brent's with us on a phone call, but he, he, I see him walking that a lot of evenings with his wife. And, and, uh, I know that he can attest to the shape that it's in. Reciting mower shop, that's something where we would take it from the vinyl siding that it has now to, uh, tin to match our other outbuildings. It, uh, is, has been beat, um, by golf balls. A lot of people somehow, you know, seem to hit it over there. I'm not saying I do that, you know, I'm. I'm just down the straight and anyway. But, uh, but yes, it's been beat, uh, by a lot of golf balls. There's a number of holes in, uh, this, the shed. And, um, that's something we would like to see. Adding more cart paths around the course. One thing on our course and the second point, though, I mean, that last point kind of goes with it, fixing drainage issues on hole seven and five. Those two things kind of go hand in hand. When we get hard rains, we actually have to close the court to carts, which, uh. Keeps more people from, uh, actually coming to play the course on certain days throughout the year. Last year, that wasn't a big issue, but this year we, we had the course closed for almost. Granted, there was snow on the ground, so we wouldn't have been open anyways, but we kept it closed for almost three weeks to carts. And, uh, but if we have more cart paths, we can open sooner, uh, and we open to cart paths only. And then, um, that also helps to just keep drawing in, uh, more income for, for the golf course and, and more activity out there. Uh, and then that last point there, just en- encourage city residents to use the golf course. Uh, golf is a sport you can start playing anytime in your life. And, uh, we, uh, uh, see, I mean, we still have, I mean, how old is, uh, Rita? Is she nine? I think she turned ninety this year. I mean, we still have, we still have people that are ninety plus years old playing golf out on our course. So it's, uh, a sport you can play anytime in your life. All right. Uh, yeah, next one. Clubhouse remodel slash deck project. Um, so the clubhouse has seen its better years, uh, for sure. Um, these are the issues that we have with it right now and that need to be addressed. Um, as soon as possible. Unusable grilling space. So these are just a couple of pictures. Right now, the grade of our concrete deck actually, uh, slopes back down toward the clubhouse. And so all of the water is draining back toward the foundation of all the clubhouse. Um, and that's where you see, um, kind of that corner right there is, uh, where all that water sits. And, uh, it'll sit for days after it rains. Um, and then as you can see, picture on the right, uh, those are the cracks in our concrete deck. And you can see all the grind marks from where we've had to grind it down just to keep that deck level, um, over the years. This is our bailing retention wall. This is on the east side. Uh, if you guys, in that little handout that I had, that second page. Um, has a little diagram that I just drew up, uh, kind of the deck project overview. So on the east side of where we're planning to kind of expand the deck is where that, um, retention wall is. Uh, you can't tell that retention wall is being pushed out. It's supposed to be in line with the other one that is currently not being pushed out. Um, so it's almost pushed, uh, I mean, that retention wall is eight inches thick, so it's almost pushed out. Uh, eight inches from that other one. And on the right side, this is just within, so I think the clubhouse was painted three to four years ago. So just within the past three to four years, that retention wall has moved out. That two inches where you can see it's been, uh, where it hasn't been painted. So, um, it continues to push out and, uh, get worse. This is our failing foundation wall. So that, uh, is the other retention wall. It's kind of hard to see in this diagram, uh, when I copied these, it, it, I copied it the wrong way. So, um, but it's, it's on the east side of the clubhouse and that retention wall is pushing into our foundation wall of the clubhouse. And it's actually breaking that concrete out. Um, and that just brings us concern because there's an overhang there. It leads us to, uh, you know, just question structural, uh, structural capability to, um, you know. Uh, keep everybody safe, so. Uh, this is our rotted out railing and seating. So as you can see, uh, there's not supposed to be a gap in between, uh, that railing. And, um, that's supposed to be tied together. And then, uh, that's just a picture of some other seating on the deck that we have that's definitely rotting out. If you go to the next picture, this is just kind of a video that we wanted to show how serious it actually is. If you want to play that, just to. Yep. So that's what, uh, our current railing does, um, and seating and, um. On the other side of that is where our retention wall is and there's about a ten to fifteen foot drop on the other side of that. I can go see again. Uh, code violation. So currently that is the stairwell that leads down to the lower, uh, from the outside to the lower portion of the clubhouse. It doesn't have a railing, um, a handrail. That's one thing, but then the concrete block railing on either side, uh. It meets the code for a tow board, but it, it's only about thirty inches tall. And so it's not tall enough. Um, it's right by where people walk out the door. So we've always had concern of somebody toppling over the top of it when they walk out the door. Um, but then that also, uh, you know, it's not ADA compliant, um, that our current deck. And so there's actually a eight inch step up to get into the clubhouse. And we've actually had a couple of our elderly members fall when they are walking into the clubhouse. All right. So this is just kind of a, a summary of, uh, the quote that I got you guys in that handout. Um, so the clubhouse deck project is gonna cost forty seven thousand five hundred dollars and it'll fix all of the issues that we currently have. With, uh, our deck and the Hillsborough Golf Association is, is graciously donating twenty thousand dollars toward the project. Um, as they kind of close out their accounts and everything like that. Um, and so the remaining funds needed for this project is twenty seven thousand five hundred. And if you look back at our tournament schedule, our tournament schedule, um, our first tournament is March twenty third, or is it twenty fourth? One of the two, one of the two days, but, uh, needless to say, we have to do something with the deck before we host that tournament. Because we're gonna have upwards of thirty to fifty people using our facilities. And, uh, currently it's, it's not, uh, obviously up to code and, and usable. And so, um. This is, this is the option I suggest and the option I think we should take. Um, I'm asking you guys that we proceed with this as soon as possible. Uh, the construction company that got us this quote is the only construction company that I was able to get a quote from that was able to do it before. Uh, the twenty third. So this is something that would be completed, um, before the twenty third, when we have our first tournament. And, um, we've already poured. Over the last six months, we've probably poured close to four to five thousand dollars to redoing the interior. Uh, so the interior, once we complete it, hopefully, our, our timeline is in the next couple of weeks. Um, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a nice place for people to host events and for us to host tournaments out of and have open hours. And so, um, we just don't want to see, uh, that, you know, paired with our current deck situation. Um, and that last slide, if you go to that last slide, Matt, um, I know because I felt like I'd probably get questions about it, there are alternative fixes. Uh, we can do kind of a temporary deck railing and we can bring the stairwell up to code. And that cost is gonna be about eight thousand five hundred dollars, uh, but it won't fix all those other issues that, uh, could lead to liability issues. Um, for the city, um. And that would be the concrete and drainage issues, failing retention and foundation walls, bringing the clubhouse up to ADA compliance. And, and, uh, give the golf course a usable space, the, uh, hot host meals and things like that. So, um, we wanted to share those things with you today. Those, that's kind of the, the big thing, you know, summing up twenty twenty three and moving into twenty twenty four. We see improvement in the golf course and allowing us to do more out there. So. And that should be it.
There we go. Any questions? I will, you certainly saw it in the video, but if you hadn't have had a video tested to that myself, because. And we were out there looking at it for some other reasons, you know, we definitely saw all those things. Yeah, it needed to be fixed and, and there is no doubt that there is just a liability issue waiting to happen there. And, uh, you know, sometimes, you know, you. You try to be good stewards of taxpayer money, but this is one of those things where it's probably pay me now or pay a lot more later.
Yeah, I agree.
So, um, you know, and, and, and at the end of the day, we gotta do the right thing. You know, personally, I'd like to see, uh, some numbers about what it's gonna take to get that bathroom up to ADA compliance, because I think that's important as well. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think that should, that should stop what we're talking about here, but. Yeah, I mean, I I don't think that should, that should stop what we're talking about here, but. Yeah, I'd love to have you come back with some numbers for that bathroom.
And I will say, uh, just because I wanted, uh, some of you might not know who Synergy. Uh, maintenance and construction is. They're a company based out of Newton. Jeremy Robinson is the guy who owns the company. He uh is a regular out at our golf course, um, plays upwards of. Three to four times a month at our golf course and so he uh.
Yeah, not to interrupt here, but he also is a Marion County resident.
Yes, he's a Marion County resident. Yep, um, so he he uh is pretty local to the area, spends a lot of time in Hillsborough, does a lot of projects. Uh, I know that they were just finishing a project out at Strasburg Church and so they they do a bunch for Marion County and the surrounding area. Um, and the quality of work um is is. Well, so they they have a contract with Texas Roadhouse and they do a lot of work for Texas Roadhouse. So the quality of work of Texas Roadhouse is okay with it. Uh, then I think we'll be okay with it too, so. That's something I just want to point out as well, but you guys haven't heard about Synergy, so.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question. Um, from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three with the increase. In rentals and whatnot, are is the golf course running into issues of um? Just more warranty on the equipment or not having enough equipment for all the rentals that. Also might need to be looked at at a later point or?
Yeah, definitely. So we've looked into multiple options. Um, we've had multiple golf court, golf carts uh. Um, companies like Kawasaki and Easy Go and Club Car approach us about lease uh possibilities. Um, it's something we've looked into. Uh, right now, we just didn't feel like a place in our budget. We make that work. Uh, but down the road, we're definitely going to need to. All of our coat, all of our carts are early two thousand models. Um, we only have seven of them. And uh, there are days where we we rent some of them out two to three times uh in a in a single day and and even then, we also. Uh, for like our tournaments even use uh member carts, so the member carts are being used for our tournaments because we just don't have. Um, enough rental carts, but it is something that we've looked into a little bit and and considered and and would like to do more of. But we've, we've really been gracious enough to have uh Harold Schultz in town. He's, he was uh on our golf association board and he. Um, is an easy go dealer actually, and so he actually does work on uh all of our golf carts and stuff like that, so. Yes, that is a concern that we have going forward with the increase for sure.
Any other questions? So what we have before us is a request for twenty seven thousand five hundred. Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Would somebody care to make that motion that uh, and and well, before we do that, where would the funds come from?
Uh, local option, sales tax. Um, there's three hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars budgeted in there for capital improvements. Um, it also pays the debt service for the pool and and now, you know, it's it's shifting over to pay other debt service uh with a chunk of that money that comes in there. Um, the three hundred thousand is essentially um the money we use to. Uh, repair the pool and then some other recreational assets, so it's kind of in line with what that is. So that would be where I'd recommend taking.
Sorry, I do have another question as well. Um, so for the twenty seven thousand five hundred. In the situation like, let's say they come out, they find some more issues that would require, you know, extra funds. How would we go about? Because, you know, they're working, working on at the time, so how would we go about, you know? Covering those, if there is an excess. Make sure that that is covered so that the work can continue.
Yeah, good question, Matt.
Yeah, that would work. Uh, they'd have to do a change order.
Okay.
I uh through my purchasing authority, I can go up to ten thousand dollars. I would hope it wouldn't be a ten thousand.
We've taken just about everything into consideration.
Yeah, okay, so you know. This is probably a pretty good number there. Uh, you're right, there obviously could be something. You know, we would probably just take that separately.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't want to, yeah, I didn't want, you know, them to have to stop mid-construction in order for us to, you know, wait for the next council meeting to approve like. An increase of the budget or whatnot, so just.
That's a fair question. I think we can go up to ten. Jan, well, that's how I interpret that as my spending authority. I. Can prove purchases up to ten thousand dollars, so usually that.
So what we can do is we can, uh, instead of, instead of somebody making a motion for twenty seven five, you could. Make it a higher number as a not to exceed number, you know, and if you wanted to say thirty 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 thousand or or whatever. You know, whatever number you you feel might be uh. You know, if it's ten plus ten percent or, you know, something like that, we could, we could certainly entertain that.
That'd be a way to do it too.
And then we don't have to bring it back to the council.
Yeah.
That would also allow for room if we wanted to bring the bathroom upstairs up to ADA compliance.
Yeah, I think we probably treat that as a separate project, so, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if you can fit it in this one, but.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I, yeah, just throwing it out.
Matt, do we need to approve for the, if it's approved for the amount of the proposal? Like, how much the cut, the check would be cut for, even though we're getting the twenty thousand in?
Yeah, you'd want to approve the project costs. Um, what will end up happening? Yeah, that's a good point too. Uh, the project costs, you want to approve it that way because uh it will be considered an expenditure through that way, even though we will get a revenue that's offsetting. For twenty thousand, so if you wanted to do a not to exceed, you could go sixty thousand. Not to exceed, so that would give you thirteen or twelve five as kind of a cushion. Uh, and then, you know, when when we get the twenty thousand from the golf association, we'll just pass that through as a revenue too and mark it out that way. You're only actually spending the twenty seven, but.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, accept a motion on this proposal?
Sixty thousand not to exceed.
There you go.
Okay, so we have a motion uh to approve the project with a not to exceed amount of sixty thousand dollars. With uh the golf association funding twenty thousand dollars of that. Is that, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries and that project is approved.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you. You know, I do want to say that uh in the last couple of years, I. Run into a number of the uh people that are. Regular golfers and and uh, you know, what they keep telling me is they've never seen the course in better shape and. They really appreciate the work that you guys do and and so I think it's really. Going well from the user's perspective, at least from what I hear, so keep up the good work, okay?
Appreciate it.
Well, it looks pretty much nicer when it's done, that's for sure.
I agree. Go ahead, Rome.
Uh, do you know when you might be able to come back with a quote on getting the bathroom up to ADA?
Um, if I called tonight, you'd be here tomorrow morning again.
Oh, okay.
He he works pretty quick.
Let's see if we can't have something for the next meeting.
Yeah, for sure. I can have something for the next meeting. Absolutely.
Alright. Okay. So we're now into our business item section of our agenda. And the first item up is the consideration of purchase of transformers from Midwest Electric Transformer Service. At a cost not to exceed one hundred twenty six thousand dollars. Mr. Styles.
Eye popping number, I'm sure. Uh, okay, so what you have in front of you, we we buy our transformers from Midwest uh electric transformer services. So what you have there is twelve fifty KVA pad mount transformers. Those are basically residential transformers. And one three hundred KVA pad mount transformer. The the three hundred KVA is is a backup transformer. We need that um to be moved in and we're going to be using that at the childcare center. Uh, we have one in stock that could work there. Uh, it's five hundred KVA, so it's kind of an overkill transformer and that's really the big one that we keep on hand to to back up. Uh, some of our larger users. Um, so the the KVA transformer for the childcare center, the three hundred, uh, that will actually be born. The cost of that will be borne by the user. We usually charge that back and so it's, since it's an abnormally sized one, they will be paying for that and it's factored into their project already. Uh, the 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 twelve K fifty KVA transformers is actually earmarked for the midnight housing project. Um, the reason why we're ordering that now, even though that project has not been approved yet uh for the tax credits. Uh, is because these transformers, as James indicated, are thirty to forty weeks out. Um, so if we if we get them. Uh, you know, we're hoping that the timing would work out well if that project was to move forward. Uh, the good news is if that project doesn't move forward, we still need those transformers to do the uh carriage hills change out, so. Um, we've got a backup use for them. If that, you know, we we would just move that quicker up into the queue of things we would be doing, so. Uh, they are, it is an eye popping number, I know that. Um. And you're talking a hundred and sixteen thousand nine seventy, uh, then you have to pay sales tax on top of that because of electrical, um, all that stuff, so. We're anticipating a not to exceed cost of a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Um, the fifty KVA transformers are seven thousand three hundred and ninety five dollars a piece and. The uh three hundred KVA is twenty eight thousand two thirty, so. Not cheap. Nothing in electric is cheap. Uh, this price is probably. Ooh, fifteen percent higher than it was four years ago. Um, and lead times are multiples higher. Uh, we used to be able to get these. You know, six weeks, uh, so not now, no, yeah, just not getting them. Um, just as kind of an aside, if we do run into issues with these, we can source transformers from other places if we. Need to, if we run into a situation where it's an emergency, uh, we use can, Kansas Municipal Utilities can help us locate those uh within the membership. We typically would either borrow or buy it from that person, uh, and then when ours comes in, we return it to them if they need it, so. That would be, that would be an option too. If there's an emergency, I don't want everybody to panic that we, that everything's thirty to forty weeks out. We do have a stock as well, so. Uh, these are just specifically tied to projects.
What will happen with the transformer that's currently in the childcare center?
Yeah, the the one that's at the church, uh, will get, yeah, we'll we'll pull it out and then we'll send it off to get reconditioned and we'll just put it back in the. In the inventory.
Okay.
I'm not sure what size it is. I was thinking it was a hundred and fifty KVA or two hundred. Um, it's not quite big enough.
Okay, but it could potentially be used for another.
Yeah, yeah, we can rehab them. Um, they can come back and rebuild them.
It's a nationwide problem for sure and uh, you know, it's been on the agenda of the American Public Power Association for the last several years. And it gets talked about at every convention, so you know, it's something every electric utility has to deal with and it's. It's frustrating, but at the same time, you know, what it does is it causes us to be more deliberate in our planning. And thinking through these things. And so, you know, and in some respects, that's not a bad thing either. That we think about it, we do it deliberately and and make sure we're we're moving forward in a in a way that that makes sense. Cause the cost, you know, as Matt said, it's gone up fifteen fifteen percent, but you know, it's it's likely to keep, continue to go up, so. You know, securing these now is going to help us offset some of that in the future, so. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the purchase of. Transformers from Midwest Electric Transformer Service at a cost not to exceed a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Councilman Wilkins moves. Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next up is another electric item, which is consideration. And you talk about long lead times, consideration of recommendation, enter all tech queue. For a twenty twenty six electric bucket truck, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, this is another one that I I find hilariously ridiculous that we have to do this, but. Uh, so we we're scheduled to replace the the bucket, the large bucket truck uh in two thousand twenty six, when everything else kind of rolls off our lease schedule. Uh, in order to do that, though, we have to get in the queue right now with um. Uh, back in twenty two, when we were talking about it, we were kind of looking long range planning. It was five years out, so we would have been. Twenty seven, uh, which to me just doesn't make any sense. How can you even? How do you even promise anybody anything at that point? Like, at what price are you, are you taking? Nothing. You can't really do anything. Um, so essentially what this would be is we, you know, got it specked out. Here's what the cost is now, three hundred and eight thousand. Um, that's the cost today. Um, and so what we're looking at in twenty twenty six is going to be more than that probably. Um, but we don't know. Uh, so what what you're, what you would be looking at doing today is just getting in the queue for that uh in the production schedule for them for twenty twenty six. Uh, doesn't tie you down to purchasing it at any particular price.
So we're not paying anything right now. We're just getting in the.
You're basically putting your name in the list, yeah. Um, you know, you're not tied down to any particular. Cost of if this changes, if we decided to do something different, uh, if we specked out, change the specs. Yeah, you're not, you're not glued to it. Um. Yeah, it's just one of those things where you've got to get it into the, into the list to be considered.
Sure.
Uh, and how they're doing this is, you know, you get put into the queue, uh, but if another larger. Best run utility comes, like Evergy or something comes in and wears. Two hundred of these things, um, you could easily get bumped out of the queue and that's why, I think that's how that works right now. Uh, it's, to me, is not a workable business model. I don't know how they get away with it, but it is what it is. Um, so right now, we're recommending that we move forward with getting ourselves in the queue for the twenty twenty six. Uh, we do not have to accept uh delivery of that and, you know, obviously we'll get a price and we'll. When we get closer, they can give us a delivery time, so. Uh, you'll, you'll be seeing this again, hopefully in twenty twenty six or twenty twenty five. Uh, with an actual price and an actual idea of when we'll get it, but now we're just wanting to enter our names in the queue right now.
Questions? Hearing none, accept a motion to uh, to uh, give Mr. Styles approval to enter the all tech queue. For a twenty twenty six electric bucket truck. Councilman McCarty moves, councilman by seconds. Any further conversation or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on to a consideration of another proposal for PC or personal computer replacements from Networks Plus. Totalling ten thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars. Six hundred and twenty five too much.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, uh, so we we went on with net uh Networks Plus earlier, late last year, I guess, as our IT provider. Uh, one of the things that we're doing is cycling through the inventory of products and and seeing what we have on our system. Uh, we've got a lot of older PCs, some of which are, you know, over ten years, um. And they just need to be replaced. They they pose a security risk for us. They're not compatible with a lot of things we do. Um, so what we've got here are the seven replacement units that are the high, high needs ones. Um, once we get through these, though, I'm happy to report that we're not too far. Too too bad on the rest of them. We've been pretty good about replacing them. Uh, we do plan on. Budgeting and planning to do some replacements on a new schedule, uh, which is one of the things that Network Plus has helped us out with. Um, and we've also standardized our 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 units too, so everything, and now we're going to go with this Dell OptiPlex seven ten for. For uh desktops and then a precision fifty five fifty five five four oh uh for laptops. So we've we've got kind of a mixed environment. Some people have laptops and have desktops, just depends on usage. Um, they're all business class. They come with three year warranties, uh, all support on those two, so they're they're quick repair or replacement. Um, which is, I think, a good, good choice with those. Um, yeah, ten thousand six twenty five for that uh to cover those and that covers, includes the installation. Uh, they're going into all different departments, so there'll be, you know, that cost will be associated with those departments. Uh, I think fire department's getting two, so they're going to be the ones that get the most out of that, so. Um, yeah, and so we're recommending moving forward with these these approvals uh for these replacements.
Questions?
Great, old ones, Dan.
Yeah, if there's any value on them, I don't think you're going to get much out of that ten year old one. Uh, there's a couple of them that maybe we could do. If if not that, we'll end up doing electronic recycling on them if we can reuse them. Uh, we may offer them for sale. I know we, some people do that too. State, state does that, Tabor does that, so. I don't know who's on me in the market for a super old PC, but you know, maybe, maybe somebody, who knows?
Put Linux on it, I guess.
You can run it, yeah, I can still run.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to uh approve the uh purchase of PC replacements from Networks Plus. Totalling ten thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars. Councilman by moves, councilman McCarty, are you seconding?
Yes.
Alright, so we have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries, we're going to keep plowing through, we're going to move from council meeting into a land bank meeting. So I will call a meeting of the Land Hillsborough, uh, Land Bank to order. We have, uh, first up approval of minutes from our last meeting, did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions, comments regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion from, uh, Councilman Wilkins, sir second, from Councilman By. Any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And into the, uh, meet of our land bank meeting, we have two proposals tonight to, to consider. First up is consideration of a bid of seven thousand eight hundred and two dollars from Gary McLeod for three oh six West Grand Avenue, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so we, uh, put this out to bid and we actually, we showed the house to, I think, almost a dozen people. Uh, we only had one bid, and so Gary came in and made that bid, uh, everything was intact there as far as his, everything is acknowledgements. He did have a couple of spaces that weren't, uh, initial, but I think that's fine, I, we had kind of discussed those. So, um, you know, he did sign off on everything, uh, he has, all, all of his properties are up to, up to par, uh, here for us. So we don't have any objections to Gary taking on that project or that property. The only thing that he had questioned about was the timeline, like if, if he could do it in a year. Uh, and so the, the assurance I would say with that is that, yeah, you, we, we will work with you if you are working on it. Um, you know, if, if you haven't touched it for ten weeks, then yeah, we may have to have a conversation. But, um, Gary does great work, sometimes it's not the quickest, um, and so I think that was his, his real concern with that. But, um, overall, we don't have any concerns with that, so we're recommending go ahead and moving forward with the sale. Uh, what will have to happen with this, there'll be have to be a notification of sale, which we have to publish, uh, thirty days from now, we could get to a close. Uh, once, well, thirty days from when published. Um, this is an as is transaction, um, it is just a, a quick claim deed. And so it's a fairly straightforward transaction. Uh, we'll have an option agreement to purchase the property back if he hasn't completed it within a year or within a designated timeline. Uh, less a thousand dollar fee for that, um, for the administration of it, so. We are ready to move forward.
Okay, so the action you need us to take is to accept his bid or to approve the bid and publish?
Yeah, that would be.
Okay, would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Councilman by seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We now have another proposal in front of us for the purchase of Willow Glen Block One, Lot Twelve from Spring Branch Construction, Mr. Styles.
So we got this very late in the day, actually, I was composing the email with the bids from the other project. When I got this offer in, I talked with Nick a little bit about the Spring Branch Construction, uh, wants to purchase the lot, the remaining lot that we have in Carriage Hill, or excuse me, Willow Glen, um, I was going to pull that up before you could see it. Too far north, there we go. So this is the lot right here. Last one that the city land bank owns. Uh, if you recall, last year, we sold this lot here to Ken and Patty Funk. Um, Nick's intention, I believe, is to build a house on it, uh, he's got a, a plan for doing that, so.
So when you say, just for clarification, Nick is Nick?
Nick Heine, yeah, Nick Heine, who owns Spring Branch Construction, yes, sorry.
No problem.
Yep, so, uh, the list price for this is a little over eleven hundred dollars, so he's offering seven fifty. You know, I don't know if you want to go to bat for eleven hundred, uh, if he's going to build a house on it, I feel like our win on this is the house being built, not so much the three hundred and four, four hundred dollars we're missing out on. So you know, I, I, I would recommend moving forward with the sale on this. This will, again, this will have to be a, a transaction that if you prove it, that we would have to go through and do the publication process as well. You know, thirty days out, we can schedule a, a closing with this, uh, we, again, we do a quick claim deed, this would usually issue through the land bank. Uh, pretty straightforward transaction, there's no option agreement to buy this one back, you know, that, that's a little bit different. But, uh, it would just be a straight sale for him on this one.
In terms of, uh, any plans relative to construction, this isn't going to have to fall into our alternative housing over.
No, no, he's not, that was not his intention, uh, that lot is pretty narrow. Um, and so he was working on getting, getting a plan that made sense to fit on that lot. There are a couple of homes on, on similarly sized lots, there's the smaller ones.
There was one that's very small within that.
Small, pretty narrow. Uh, I, I have pretty, pretty high confidence he'll build something that's compatible with the neighborhood.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none and accept a, a motion to, uh, approve the, or accept the, uh, the bid or the, uh, the purchase of Willow Glen Block One, Lot Twelve from Spring Branch Construction for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Councilman Wilkins moves, is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. So we'll move forward there and, uh, we will now move out of a land bank meeting and back into a, the city council meeting. Kind of wild how we can do that, you know, seamlessly. Had a lot of hiccups, that's pretty good. Discussion items tonight, we have credit card fees, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. Uh, so I didn't, we have been accepting credit cards since two thousand and five. Uh, and when they originally set up that process, they decided that they were going to absorb those credit card fees. So, uh, anytime you're in a credit card, there's a transaction fee or a processing fee. Um, you know, it depends on who your processor is and what that amount is, it's usually percentage. Uh, and then usually a, a small, small amount or the actual transaction. So, um, we were talking about it in the, in the, in the office and kind of looking at it. You know, I think when they originally started out, it probably wasn't terribly too much, uh, but it's starting to really add up because we, we pulled the numbers on it. And, uh, the last year, last year, we paid thirty four thousand dollars in credit card processing fees. So you know, that, that kind of makes you think, okay, well, that's, that's a significant amount, and that's basically most of a position, you know, a full time position. And you know, in the private sector, you can, you can, you're not allowed to split those off and charge those. Uh, but Kansas State law allows that you can charge, pass on credit card fees as convenience fees. Um, and a lot of, a lot of number, number of governmental units do that. State of Kansas does it, Marion County does it. Um, so it's one of those things where, you know, at the transaction point, you notify them, you know, there's going to be a processing fee on this, it's going to be whatever that is. Uh, usually there's a minimum, like a dollar, dollar fifty, and then a percentage fee based on top of that. So, uh, the one, the, one of the ones we've looked at, uh, is a dollar fifty per transaction fee. Uh, and then two, two and a half percent, so if you did a hundred dollars, it'd be four dollars in transaction fees. So, uh, it doesn't go to the city, it goes directly to the credit card processor, it doesn't come to us, uh, for that. Uh, that's just sort of how it's set up. You know, our, our current processor, we have, it's not quite as clear what that transaction fee is with ours, we have Forte, CSG Forte. Um, it's not, since we absorb those costs, it's set up differently. If we were to make the transition to that, I'm sure that they would set it up in a way that would be similar to that dollar fifty and then, you know, processing charge. You know, it's, it would be something there, it would be, you know, a convenience fee. And obviously, it is a convenience for, for users to, to use a credit card. We do have a lot of people online who use a credit card and pay. And you know, there's, there's definitely an argument to be said that, well, if, if we didn't have that option, if we didn't absorb that, then maybe we wouldn't collect as much. Uh, that's a fair statement, you know, maybe that is the case. Um, but then the, the other side of it is, it is an awful lot of money to be eating, uh, for credit card fees when a lot of other governmental units, people are kind of used to paying those fees. So, um, we just wanted to bring it to your attention, you know, we don't, you, you absolutely don't have to do anything, I mean, that would be an option. Uh, if you do that, you know, you're just going to continue, continue to eat those fees and, you know, we've got that in the budget. So it's not, it's not like it's some sort of extra thing that happens, um, we just sort of take that as a cost of doing business. Uh, but you would have the option, we felt like it was the responsible thing to bring that to your attention, that that would be an option if you wanted to do that and make that transition. So, uh, we're just kind of laying that issue out for you and, you know, if there's some guidance, if you want to think about it, you want to talk about it more. That's, it's really just an issue we wanted to bring to attention.
So is any of this in effect today with rec desk? Is there anything like this going on with rec desks? So people are participating in our rec program and they pay by credit card, there's no convenience fee, there's no transaction fees.
We're eating those fees as well, and I did not gather calculations on that. We divide that up between, uh, uh, the pool and the golf course and the rec based on usage the best we can.
So obviously, the big numbers come from utilities.
Yeah, this is all util, this is all.
Yeah, okay, this is.
Well, I would also.
That's what this is.
Include court and.
Court and what you would consider, um, nonutility payments, if somebody is paying to rent the scout house, for example, with a credit card. There would be, uh, this would be included in that, uh, building permits, any, any, a lot of those kinds of items that can add up too.
Like utility bills.
Large tickets.
Or wood.
Absolutely would.
They're, they're.
They're the primary.
Right, okay, sorry.
What other items?
Just to kind of give some scale to this, I mean, you've, you've put some, you've put some whole numbers in front of us. But generally speaking, what are we talking about as a percentage on a transaction? Are we talking four percent, six percent?
No, it's not quite that high, I think it's probably more, you know, it's, it's hard to say exactly what it is.
I, I, I understand because American Express charges.
They, they charge it more, yeah.
You know, I get that.
Yeah, uh, I think it would probably be closer to the three percent if you were to average it out. Um, I was trying to do that calculation, I didn't, the way they break it out from charges isn't quite as transparent as it, as that. But, uh, you're just kind of estimating, I think it's probably closer to three.
So what is it if somebody's doing direct deposit?
Uh, ACH fees are different, yeah.
What do you think?
Oh, yeah.
Again, kind of relatively speaking.
You know, like a dollar, I think they, theirs are more of a flat fee than a percentage.
I think it's a transaction fee on.
Just a transaction fee for those. Yeah, because when you use ACH clearinghouse, it's just straight bank to bank. There's not a credit card to process.
I guess I'd be interested to hear from people whether they would rather have rates raised in total or whether they would be more inclined to pay on an individual basis.
Yeah, it's first.
Because I, you know, I guarantee you that it's going to be a lot harder if we would not take credit cards to get, to get our bills collected. That is no question about that. That's just my thoughts, counsel.
I mean, nobody likes to hear about, you know, being charged extra fees and whatnot. But I just, just considering how much has gone up just over the course of a year. And I mean, do we have a percentage of people that use credit cards now compared to a total? Cause I'm, I could see this going up just, you know, as things move forward in time, just more people becoming more liable to use credit cards.
I would, I would say if we looked back at the data, you would see a significant increase in, say, June of twenty one because we switched to front desk at that time. So a lot of those online payments, you would see that increase there. We also, um, no longer accepted cards are the, over the phone, and so people would be coming in or paying online. So I think that there, you are see, are going to see a jump at that point. If we look back at that, um, we would again have to look at the numbers to gauge a percentage.
Obviously, the, uh, the, you know, the amount that we're talking about, you know, if you, if you cast it across the entire utility is not three percent. You know, it's something much less than that, so, you know. But again, you know, if you raised rates by any, any amount, you're making the people that pay by check or pay by, uh, by, uh, uh, bank draft, you know, pay for those that want the convenience of a credit card. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a balancing act. So, you know, I'd be interested, uh, to hear from the council, you know, maybe at our next meeting, maybe get a chance. You know, ask around and then see what people think. And we have people here in the room, do you guys have any feel about that, how you would feel about that?
Oh, I have some opinions on it.
Care to share?
Uh, I'll, usually if I have to go pay like taxes, uh, at the courthouse, uh, whenever I have to use my credit card, I don't have to. But they always tell me that, hey, if you use your credit card, there's always a, uh, an extra fee. You don't, you know, there won't be that charge. I don't really like paying that extra fee, but again, it is a convenience to use that credit card. And my question would be on the online payments that are done with credit card. Would you, if you had a little comment on there, do you accept this extra fee? Cause a lot of places actually will do that, if you call in for the payment and you pay by card, you accept the fee. Would you have to do that on all of your online payments or would that be a, you hit it once and then you're good to go on the rest of the auto payments?
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
We'd have to, we'd probably have to do some investigation on that with our, with our, um, system or the front desk or who, whoever we're using for that. Yeah, I, you know, I, I will have to admit that I've been frustrated, you know, when I've wanted to buy tickets to an events and stuff like that. You know, they want to charge you what seems to be a fairly exorbitant fee to handle a transaction. But, you know, I get that that's the way of the world sometimes and.
And I mean, like you said, that's the alternative of just raising rates as a whole versus just putting on the one fee for those that, that are actually utilizing the credit cards. I would view that as better than just charging everyone just a flat increase.
Yes, bringing it out over, if you were to do it as that, obviously it wouldn't be three percent, it would be significantly lower than that. I don't know what it would be, we'd have to do some math, figure out what that would look like if we were to go to. It would be much though, you, electric utilities.
I always use direct deposit.
But you know, credit card, like you said, credit cards are real, real convenient, so if you have to pay a little extra sometimes, the convenience is worth it, I think.
And I mean, I use my credit card to pay a lot of things, it's, a lot of times I get cash back for it as well. And so, you know, it's.
I, I don't think there's a, there's an easy answer, but I think it's worth, I think it's worth taking it to the, to the people and, and seeing what people think about it. Because, uh, you know, it's, uh, stuff like this, you know, you can create, you can make a small problem turn into a big one, you know.
Well, to be clear, there's really not a problem, we can continue.
No, I understand, but I mean, we can, we can make one.
You can make, make a huge mess out of this if you're really willing to. You know, it's just, at, at the thirty four thousand, you start saying, wow, that's a pretty significant amount of money.
Yeah, but if we, you know, never mind, I'm not going to say that.
At a point of clarity.
Sure.
So we've, we've talked about the credit card charges, so if you are talking to your constituents, it's credit card, debit card, uh, e-check or ACH. So when you talk about auto draft, those would still have a fee associated with it. So just to, to be clear, it's not only credit card.
But if I wrote, if I write you a check, then there's no fee, right?
Right. If we moved forward with charging that to the individual, right, there would not be.
But checks aren't free.
Not electronic checks, no.
Not even, especially medical checks, you know.
There's definitely a cost to that.
I already just ordered some and it was. How much they cost. So. Are there any comments or questions about this issue that we need to address? I say let's put it back on the agenda next, for next meeting and see, see what we hear. Makes sense? Okay, um, next item up is, uh, we have an executive session. Councilman Wilkins, if you mind taking care of that for us.
Oh, okay. I move that the council re, that the city council recess into executive session for the purpose of preliminary discussion of acquisition of property pursuant to KSA seven five dash four three one nine B six for a period of twenty minutes. The session will include the city administrator and city attorney, the open meeting will resume at.
Seven, or eight twenty.
Eight twenty P M.
Hey, we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, say aye. Okay, the council's now in executive session, so. We will. Let the room clear and then we will get started. All right, Mr. Styles.
Yeah.
Have you got us clear online yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
What happened?
Camera, camera went crazy. Probably ought to note that Brent, when Brent dropped out, he dropped out during the.
Exact session.
It was before, it was way before that, about seven thirty.
Yeah, it was like.
It was about time, about game time.
About game time.
Business, business.
Seven forty, so I can.
He was not.
He was not in attendance.
He was not in attendance, I think for the last thing we voted on, which would have been the computers.
I will make note of that, thank you.
Okay, we're back in open session and let the record state that there was no action taken during the executive session. And we're moving on now to our city administrators report, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we kind of mentioned some state legislative issues about some other things, but the mayor, Councilman By and I went to L K M, local day at the government. We met with Senator Wilborn. And then we talked with Representative Owens and Senator Fag, who will be our representative, our senator. I think it was a pretty good opportunity to connect and talk with some things. I wish we've got a little bit more one-on-one time with Representative Owens, but that he's triple, triple booked all at that time, so that didn't work out, but it was, I think, pretty good. And then the following week, this last week, I went to the K M U day at the Capitol and on their board. That was focused more on utility issues and there's definitely some things that we're watching. I've got about thirty bills I'm watching right now just to make sure that we're, you know, aware of what's happening with it. Probably more than I think I've ever done, honestly. It's been kind of interesting this year. Dived into that a little bit further than normal, but we've got some specific issues on solar generation that we need to be watching. Consumer protection for rooftop solar, there's been a lot of predatory practices with solar companies coming in town, over promising, under delivering. Really, it's, that's a bad situation and that needs to get taken care of and we'll see what that looks like. I did get an opportunity to have dinner with Senator Fag, sat next to him and talked to him at great length about some of these things, so that was a really positive thing out of that. It's interesting right now, but we have, I, I, I'm happy that we have K M U and L K M, they do an awesome job. They keep updates and if you, I don't know if y'all get the updates from them on that or not, but we can sign you up to get those, that they do at least weekly updates on things that are going on, so really good, really good stuff there. Vacancies, we're interviewing, hopefully a water and sewer position this week. I think they've got that kind of nailed down. I've been doing assistant to the city administrator interviews, I've done four of those, we'll hopefully have somebody on that. Been really happy with the response. I had like fifteen people to, to consider, which is really great, yeah, just using Indeed, so.
Awesome.
And then we did hire, made an offer and got it accepted for the custodian position.
Good.
So, and that person will be starting, I don't know, Thursday, okay.
Nice.
So we're moving along on those things. Planning Commission, they've got a meeting on the twenty-fifth, or they had a meeting on the twenty-fifth and they heard a rezone request for five oh one south. Maybe you'll get, you'll get that on your next agenda to consider. There were some public comment on that, but they did recommend moving that to down zone, so it's more restrictive zoning. And then at the next agenda, there are five public hearings scheduled, so we've got the container home guys have come in and they want to do more container homes on the A H up on Third Street. So they've got one single home that they're, they're interested in doing in, so we've got to go through that process and then each one of the other ones has to be on there too. And so there's, there's a couple duplexes actually that they've got proposals up there. So the planning commission is going to hear those things and then, then they'll make their way to us at the, at the city council level. So it's going to be interesting how that works. We'll see, there's some trepidation about issuing more of those permits without the first one being built. So we'll see how it goes. Adam Street walkthrough, we walked through that project with Darren on Tuesday. On Tuesday, I think we've got a pretty good plan for how we're going to handle utilities out there and the street construction. We're going to make some adjustments to the water line plan there and then I also had them put a bid alternate out to eliminate some of those asphalt curbs that are on A Street, those really create some issues for us drainage wise. I'm not sure why they, well, I know why they put them in, it's cheaper. Asphalt curbs don't hold up, they just hold water at the edge of your road. And then that gets in your base and then blows it out, so I want to try to see if we can get, while we have a contractor there to look at that. I also met with Greg Varnberg, our financial advisor yesterday, and he's working out some numbers for us on that to do this, both this project, what a financing would look like on this project, which is pretty small. And then also, we talked about those projects that we had, Lincoln Street and Wilson, that we talked about when Darren was here last time. So he's going to run some financing numbers for us, we'll get something to look at on that and then you know, if we want to make a decision, we can move forward on that. Brooke mentioned the public power thing, I think you should mention that before we started. The public power provider, reliable public power, public power providers, it's an old R P three designation through A P P A. It's pretty interesting, I think, it's going to be an interesting process to go through, they collect a lot of data, have a lot of best practice things. We're going to work toward getting, getting that designation, there's different levels too, so hopefully that'll be a, a good process. I think the new assistant to the city administrator is going to be doing some work on that, so. That's going to be great. And then I'll let you all know, we have a fire district meeting coming up on Thursday, so in case you didn't know, we do provide fire service to the city of Lehigh. Lehigh Township, Part of Minotan Township, Liberty Township, Rizley Township via contract, we're a fire district. They, we usually try to meet once, we have to meet once a year, but we try to meet twice a year. Budgeting on that has been interesting, there's a cap on those agreements that is five mils. So we can't charge them more than, what, five mil was equal to for them. It's, it's set on a percentage, the way the agreement's laid, laid out, it's set on percentage of valuation and so the city has been taking on, as the budget has expanded, the city's been taking on a larger and larger portion that's out of whack with what the agreements say. And they also have to pay for equipment, but the equipment list that they're based, that it's based on was done in two thousand fourteen. And those prices are way out of whack for what they actually are, so we're going to have a little conversation about that, hopefully we get enough people there, those meetings are really poorly attended. We're going to try to, try to move that forward, so. The last thing I had, we, we met today with our Networks Plus guys, we're going to be doing some vulnerability scanning, adding that as an active vulnerability scanning into our portfolio of services with them. And so when I mentioned that you'd be getting a different network ID, that's going to be coming too, it's going to be part of that. We're also looking at multi-factor authentication, which is the best practice. So all those things are coming down the pipe, just trying to be more and more secure from a cyber standpoint, so. That is everything I got done.
Any questions? All right, we'll now have one final opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
A couple of things, one, I've got a telephone pole that sits just outside my fence. And the guide wire is on the inside of fence, this spring I'm looking to do a privacy fence. So I'm going from a four-foot fence to six-foot. About eight or nine years ago, they had made a suggestion that it looks like one of the poles that they may need to replace. But there is some fiber optic and gas line in the area, so didn't know if that's something that we could get on the list to take a look at.
Yep, I'm sure we can. What's the address?
One oh eight South Birch. And then another question is with the, with a solar panel project, is there consideration, once it's up and running and the city is seeing the credits that they would be getting from the power pool or power pool, would there be consideration of looking at the kilowatt hour charge to the consumers? And adjusting accordingly or?
Basically, the way that, the way that works is what they're talking about giving back to the city, you know, in terms of any kind of credit is basically what we're getting paid today for the rental farm rent on the ground, on the land. So that's really not going to be impacting us financially. It's just keeping us from cost, from cost. The financial advantage is to help make the entire pool maintain its power rates. So, you know, as, as power rates go, go up or down, you know, we absolutely will be looking at those, which we do. And, you know, if we start to see significant benefits from that, then yeah, we would, we would be looking at that in terms of adjusting rates, you know, accordingly.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to comment? All right, hearing none, we will close public comment and we'll now move to council comments, Councilman By.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilman McCarty.
No, very second.
Councilman Wilkins.
Don't have anything.
All right. And I have nothing to add, so if there's any, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much and I appreciate very much you coming.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome anytime.